All right, so we're going to go ahead and call this meeting to order. Welcome, everyone. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Please be seated. I do need a motion to approve tonight's agenda. It's down there on the item page. We have a motion in a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries. We will move on into our announcements. Just like to remind everyone that these board meetings are our business board meetings and they're held in public. They're not public board meetings and that we are governed by Idaho Code Title 74 and Title 33, Chapter 5, Idaho Code, Idaho Administrative Procedures Act, IDAPA, and we do follow district policies.
I also have an announcement. It's more of a, I just want to read from Idaho Code, Title 33, Chapter 5. Employee Personnel Files. The Board of Trustees of each school district, including any specially chartered district, shall provide for the establishment and maintenance of a personnel file for each employee of the school district. Each personnel file shall contain any and all material relevant to the evaluation of the employee. The employee shall be provided timely notice of all materials placed in the personnel file and shall be afforded the opportunity to attach a rebuttal to any such materials. Personnel files are declared to be confidential and accepted from public access under any provision of Idaho Code, including but not limited to Section 74-102 and 59-1009 Idaho Code, provided that each employee or designated representative shall be given access to his own personnel file upon request and shall be provided copies of materials contained therein, with the exception of recommendation letters in a timely manner upon request. So if anybody continues to demand what we are doing regarding a specific situation, regarding a personnel matter, stop, because we are not going to give you that information. Just, that's my announcement. It's done. It been dealt with. It's done.
On that note, we will move into public input. Do we have any public inputs?
There are four letters that I received via email that have been requested to be read in front of the board.
Well, all of those letters were given to the board, to the trustees, so they do not need to be read.
They were specifically requested to be read by the people.
What's the nature of them?
They are kudos to teachers.
To teachers or a specific teacher?
A specific teacher. They're kudos just kind of saying their experience and how much they enjoy this teacher.
If the letters are in reference to a matter that we've already dealt with, I will accept having the letters put into the record, but not read.
I would agree with that.
I agree.
If you guys want to read them, you're more than welcome to. There's nothing in it.
All of the trustees received the letters. They were emailed to the trustees.
Not all of them.
Typically, we don't, typically, we don't allow everybody just to spam us and we sit here and read every, I mean, we would, if we did that every time somebody emailed us something, we'd never get through a meeting. We typically do not do that.
So as Trustee Jones mentioned, they should be attached with the agenda and incorporated into the minutes.
Into the minutes. Okay.
On that note, I do need a motion to enter into executive session. Well, let me clarify. Was there anybody here that needed to address the board that had signed in?
No.
Okay. Then I do need a motion to enter into executive session pursuant to Idaho Code 74-206-1B.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. We need a roll call vote.
Yes.
Trustee Jones. Trustee Bane?
Yes.
Chair Thompson?
Yes.
Trustee Quinney?
Yes.
Vice Chair Grissom?
Yes.
On that note, we are going to enter into executive session. If you are here for executive sessions, please remain in the room. If you are not, then we do ask you to leave and we will reopen the meeting when we are done with executive session. I was gonna say, we're going to be holdouts. Did you guys run them all off? Did you tell bad jokes or what?
There's a series of bad jokes.
I left because I thought you were going straight into exec session. I was just in, chit-chatting with Brooke.
All right, so we've come out of executive session. It is 6:54 and we're going to go into our regular meeting. First item on the agenda is an action item and it is the winter sports schedule. I move to approve.
Second.
No discussion, conversation, anything from anybody? Nope.
There are a couple of rather lengthy trips on one or two of the schedules that are concerning to me, but I will hold it up on account of that.
Well, we can have a conversation.
We can still have a conversation.
I don't need any more conversation.
You just wanted to make the statement.
That's absolutely true. It's on the record.
Okie doke.
I'm so sorry. Seconded.
Dave. All right, so we have a motion in a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Bob, what do you think?
Yes, 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 yes.
You're opposed? Okay, you're an A.
I'm an I.
You're an I. Okay, I'm a B. Okay, that being said, motion carries.
I would like to know what trips those are, though. What, do you remember what sport it was, Bob? I'm just curious.
One of them was wrestling. I can't remember for sure which football it was.
Okay.
It's probably, it's probably Lakeland.
Is it the Montana?
No.
Oh, Tri-State?
No, Tri-State's local.
Tri-State's, I see.
It's probably the Raleigh Lane Tournament in Boise.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
And so we made fundraised for that trip and we usually share a bus with another school.
Anything that's overnight, that's not a state tournament, is supposed to be fundraised for.
Yeah.
Good.
Yep.
Put that rule in place years ago, decades ago.
There's someplace on there that was a three-day trip.
That's okay.
That's Raleigh, that's Raleigh Lane. Yeah, they get there Thursday, we get there Thursday night and then wrestle Saturday, Friday and Saturday.
Wonder.
It's a two-day tournament.
They wrestle?
Rassle.
Rasslin'.
Rasslin', Bob, wrestle.
Where am I before you get there so you don't have any weapons?
We usually have a duel the night before, so they get pretty, get off the bus and wrestle.
With weapons?
No, no weapons. No duel weapons.
All right. Any further discussion on the winter sports?
No, I have none.
All right, so we'll move into discussion items. The first is the route, travel times. Part of what was asked with this was also to see what last year's was, so that we could have a kind of a comparative of what? Go ahead.
Chair Thompson, that was my fault. I just, when I wrote down my notes, it was just for this year.
Okay.
So I can definitely prepare that or have transportation prepare that and bring that next time.
That would be a precedent.
Yep.
Just because there's no, there's nothing to compare.
Right.
Other than, wow, some of these routes are pretty long.
And the tricky thing with that too is we've had so many changes with the routes, with the cuts and stuff, that it's not comparing apples to apples, but I'd be happy to put that together for you. And some of the length, the time, I did want to clarify. It includes their travel time back to the elementary schools to that second-tier run. So when you're seeing that it goes from 1:30 to 3:07, that's them actually getting back to the elementary school to run that elementary school route. So we don't have a time that the last kid gets off the bus because the route doesn't stop until they get to the elementary school, even though there's no kids on the bus at that point, because all of the secondary kids have been dropped at home and then they go to the elementary school to pick that next roundup. So I just wanted to clarify, some of those times seem longer, but there are not kids on the bus because it does include their dead time back to the school.
So the stops, the number of stops, though, are just that time period?
Yep, just in that time period. That is the number of stops that the bus is making.
It would be helpful, I mean, I guess we can try and do it, but if there was a way that they could give us an overall time, like for each route, I mean, then we see the start and stop, but what is the overall, you know, like hour, 15 minutes?
Yeah, I can calculate that in for the next round.
Yeah.
This looks great. Thank you for the information that has been provided. And I absolutely understand, we're not comparing apples to apples.
Right.
But the reality is, we are comparing what we had to what we have. And we have fielded a bunch of frustration, et cetera. So we need to understand what we've actually done.
Right.
And what that's created, because come next year, we may need to relook at this and figure out what we're going to do, because if last year, our families were all conditioned to not being on the bus an hour and a half, this year, they're on the bus for over an hour and a half, we need to have conversations on that.
We don't have any routes where kids are over an hour and a half.
It's just a subjective, throwing it out there type of a thing. I'm not saying that's occurring, but what I'm saying is what we had before is not what we have now.
Right.
And that's what I'd like to look at.
We did provide that comparison when Transportation Director Daynard was still here. We gave you the maps that show the difference in the routes that.
Well, she showed us the maps, but they were never attached to the agenda. That's why my question came up.
I will make sure that they get reattached.
Well, but again, I personally was just asking for the times.
Yep.
So, and yeah, bringing those maps back, great.
But yeah, but don't, like, that's not like number one checkbox.
And we do plan on the November 19th meeting to bring that Apple route that we're adding back in to the board for approval. And that will cause some shifting with what you're seeing here tonight.
Okay. It would be great if you could just kind of give us an overview of, like, doing this will cut off 30 minutes.
Yep, we can do that.
Okay, that'd be great.
That's the plan.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
Thank you very much.
For all your hard work.
This was actually our new Assistant Transportation Supervisor, Michael DeBrunner. He did an amazing job. He did this on his first day.
Excellent.
So it was a great way for him to get familiar with the routes.
Good. So how, everything's going good over there?
It's going amazing.
Oh, awesome. Oh, that's awesome. Yay for them.
Thank you for allowing us to add the position. We appreciate that.
All right, moving into the 25, 26 board goals.
Why was this added? I don't know what the, is this a discussion item?
It is a discussion item, yes.
Okay. And why was it added?
The policy 1620 says that the board is supposed to establish annual goals, so I was trying to align with that. And then also part of the evaluation that I've created is, it evaluates me on how I'm carrying out the goals of the board. And it helps us to align, at least the administration and our teachers, the wishes of the board and basically your priorities.
So I looked at that, because I was sort of shocked when I saw that policy and I did go back and watch the meeting, because I thought, anyways, I don't know, I think what has happened over time with the rebuilding of the website and stuff being uploaded and taken down and, you know, there's been a lot of change happening, right? That some of the things aren't exactly as they should be, because even if you listen to the meeting and you look at this policy, which is attached to that meeting, what's being read is not what the policy says. So I don't know what happened, but we definitely need to go back to this policy. And the other thing is, is the SIP plan that the board comes up with is, are the goals of the board. And meeting those goals is what we do and those are your goal. It's all-inclusive. That's because that was a change in statute, so the SIP plan is the board's goals. They are part of the superintendent's goals, they're the district goals. And then the existing superintendent evaluation, which is quite cumbersome, but we need to retain the portion that's directly related to all the policies, because there's a lot of superintendent goals, as I'm sure you're familiar, in the policies. So I think we need to obviously go back and revisit that and I apologize that I missed the other board workshop for the superintendent evaluation and coming up with the resolution for that. But obviously, the SIP plan items need to be put into the evaluation tool that we have and also, you know, making sure that those policies that are attached to that, because they are referenced there, you know, are up to date or maybe numbers changed or whatever. The other thing I noticed with this particular policy is this policy, although originally it said 2007, it's actually, the update is dated the same day as the meeting, so obviously it's not correct because we're not going to put the meeting date on the policy. But it was specifically for COVID, because of that plan that we had to maintain with COVID. And that's where, when I was listening to it being read, those were, it was specifically the goals and because we covered in that meeting, the operational plan, whether we were red, yellow, or green.
Oh, right, right.
And then this plan, it went along with the goals, because remember, we had to have all of that together for the state and for the feds, for the money.
You're right.
For, yeah, so this needs to go to policy committee and be cleaned up. And if we can move it from a Monday, I would be more than happy to come back, but I cannot do Mondays.
So I need some clarification, board. So you're saying the SIP plan is the goals of the board. That currently is dated for 2024, 2025. Do we want to update those?
Uh, no, we should.
I thought we did the 25, 26 SIP.
We did that work with Jake.
The SIP or the, there's a continuous plan.
That is, that is the SIP. Continuous improvement plan.
All right, so, all right, so I'm just make sure we're, because there's, there's another plan too that I'm referring to, so.
What plan is that?
Give me a moment.
And the other thing I was going to mention while he's looking that up is that it would have been appropriate for Sierra to bring this to the board, because that's Sierra's job to keep the board on track. But I, so did you put this on the agenda before I continue? Was this, were you bringing this to the board?
No, when I went to agenda planning, it was on the board. Rusty had asked
I requested.
for it to go before the board, that the board do its goals.
Discussion.
Yeah, it would have been appropriate for Sierra to bring it. I don't know that it's appropriate for the superintendent. I think that we need to have some discussion and make sure that this line is defined between the superintendent's, what do you call it, sandbox and the board's sandbox, because as I'm watching these emails and I have missed a couple of meetings, I'm looking at those things, there's becoming this huge blur. And I feel like, which I expressed a few meetings back, that it's becoming the superintendent wagging the board and I will not have that. The IBB negotiation is what?
With due respect, I don't think that's a correct state.
Oh, yeah, and I've even had the community members come to me and say, what is going on with the superintendent? And that's fine, you can disagree, but IBB is negotiation between the board and the teachers, is it not? I mean, we are supposed to do that or the, yeah, the union, Jason and everybody.
Right.
All I'm trying to do is make sure that the line stays, because I do feel like it's being blurred. And I'm not the only one that feels that way.
So in the policy, it does say that the superintendent and the chair collaborate on the agenda.
Oh, no, I know that. No, no, I know that.
And that's all I'm doing and I.
I'm talking about the thing as far as keeping the board on track. The board doesn't work for you, right?
Yes, ma'am.
That's what we hired Sierra for, so Sierra can say, like, if we're in the meeting, Sierra would say, oh, you know, we should have done this or. So it would have been appropriate for Sierra to say, hey, you guys are supposed to set goals. However, this specific policy was, had to do with the COVID thing. I don't have any problem with bringing it back, rewriting it, whatever. I'm just trying to make sure that things stay in a straight line.
Chairman Grissom, I'm just trying to follow the rules. The rules say that the board sets the goals and that's all I'm doing, okay?
Yeah, but we get, we have Sierra to remind us. We don't need you to remind us of what our duties are.
Well, I don't think it's inappropriate.
Well, I do. I don't like it. So I'm just voicing my opinion.
Claire?
You don't speak for the entire board, though.
Well, I'm speaking for myself and I'm speaking for the people who have come to me and said, what is going on with your new superintendent?
And you can have a conversation, come in with me anytime.
Yeah, I don't feel safe. I don't feel safe doing that. I don't have.
Okay, that's fair.
Go ahead.
For clarification, bringing it to you, you mean like?
Well, I mean, just saying, hey, you guys are supposed to set, you know, just to keep us on track, remind us, just like you do with everything else, remind us, hey, we got to get this done and we got to get this done, you know? I mean, it's, just like you do.
So would you guys prefer an email about this or being brought to agenda? I just want to make sure that I.
Yeah, I don't, it doesn't matter to me. Actually, it should be on our calendar with all our other stuff.
Okay.
Because this, this should be one of the items that we do annually. So it should be on our, at the beginning of our calendar each year. Our annual calendar.
Okay.
This, this should be one of the items, but we do it when we create the SIP plan.
Exactly.
When do we do those yearly things? Do we do them in January?
June, or what? We're supposed to do them before the start of the school year usually, but the SIP plan's a little different because that is due by October 1st. So we have a tendency to do that in late September.
So the plan.
Which is after school starting.
I apologize. The plan I was referring to is a strategic plan, which has goals in there and that is dated as of 2003, 2024. I just wanted to know if the board wants to update that. Or is the continuous improvement plan the one that we're going to refer to? Because you have goals and strategies in your strategic plan, which is posted online.
Well, actually.
That's from a committee. That's not the board's.
Okay, well, I'm just getting clarification from you.
Are you guys still having those meetings, the strategic planning meetings?
The long-range planning meetings?
Yeah, yeah.
They're scheduled. It's scheduled. It's starting. We have not had one yet, but we have a schedule for this November.
Yep, so that is part of the long range, the strategic.
So they write the strategic plan?
And then they would bring it to the board and say, here, that's how we got into having the bus routes changed for like Brookshire and all that. It was before you came. Because as they go through and they're coming up with this strategic plan, and then once they get things, you know, where they think it looks good, then they would come to the board and then we would have a meeting and say, oh, yeah, you know, blah, blah, blah. That sounds good. It doesn't sound good. But yeah, so that was done at the long range.
Okay, so thank you for the clarification.
Yeah, yep.
So the plans, when it comes to board's goals, it's done with the SIP, right? Is that, is that where I'm getting, is that?
Yes, correct.
Okay, all right, so I refer to those goals. Thank you.
Correct, yeah. Yep, so those are, those would be the same goals and I think what it is, is we need to update, if we're going to still use this, I mean, Randy put so much work into that spreadsheet. I hate to just throw the whole thing away, you know? But we probably need to update that too with the SIP stuff.
Okay, thank you for the clarification.
Can I throw out a question? Can we have maybe a document that shows everything that you guys want me reminding you on? Just that way, I'm not kind of in the dark about anything?
Yeah.
Or something that you missed.
Yeah, because I don't want to miss anything or I don't want any lines to be blurred or anything.
Yeah, yeah, I can help you with. There was something that existed. There again, I don't know where, when. It might be in the clerk's drive, but I can help you with that. It's basically all the annual policies we have to do. And then those things we have deadlines for, so the budget, the SIP, you know, evaluations.
Our self-evaluations.
Correct, yep. You know, those things that we do every year, every year, you know?
Well, this is, the reason I brought this up, this is part of your self-evaluation, is are you meeting your goals in relation to it?
Yeah, we do that in June, July, whenever.
That's one of the reasons I brought it up.
Into the school year.
Correct. Again, thank you for the, sorry.
But yeah, if we could have like a document that shows everything that you guys want reminded of in a certain time frame, that way I can.
Yeah, yeah, I can help you do that. It's basically all of our duties that are outlined in the statute.
Okay.
And then, but there was, and some of them did get put on the calendar, but then, you know, as time went on, it just sort of got dropped. But I don't mind helping you do that and I'll help you look for that stuff too to see.
Yeah, I've gone through the entire clerk drive. I haven't found anything.
Was it in the ma, I thought she had to put it in the manual at one time, because I was helping her do the manual.
I can go back through and double-check on the manual.
Rosanna did, I mean, she had a long, lengthy.
Yeah, and so, and it started, and that wasn't finished either, so that's something you want to add to as you go along or whatever. That, but yeah, I don't mind helping you do that. That way we know when it's coming up and it helps us plan better, you know?
Yeah.
To keep all that stuff out front, you know?
Agreed. Well, thank you for the clarification.
Sure.
So do we need to have more conversation on the 25, 2026 board goals?
No, but I do think we need to update the.
Policy?
That policy, yeah.
Okay, could you please, okay, perfect, thank you. All right, moving on to IBB.
I thought we were waiting this till January.
Rusty asked for it to be brought right now, because we'll have a new.
That was, that was the advisement board. You guys want to add someone to the problem-solving team? And so I needed an appointment for the problem-solving team, which we're meeting this month.
It was just for the IB, who was going to be involved with IBB was what?
This is the problem-solving team.
Okay.
And that's why.
I guess I lumped them both into, yes.
So we just need someone, a board member that's going to participate.
I'll volunteer, distribute.
All right.
What does this team do? I know this was the meeting I missed, so can someone fill me in on this?
It kind of takes the place of the meet and confer type approach that we used to have.
So is this negotiation? Is that what's happening?
It would be for issues or items other than what is typically negotiated during the IBB process.
Okay.
So it's a less formal way for.
Free strategy?
Yeah, to work things out as you go through the years. In other words, the plan is to meet once a month. And if there are issues related to any of the current negotiated agreement, those can be dealt with on an ongoing basis.
Okay.
And then if, you know, if there are changes to be made going forward in a new agreement, then that would go through the regular IBB process.
Okay, so. So are we working on the IBB agreement as we're doing that? Is that what this is or we are not doing that anymore?
Oh, that, that will be, but that won't start until February.
February.
Oh, okay, okay.
This is just, but what I took from that presentation we had. This is just, but what I took from that presentation we had, was that, um, this problem-solving team takes the current negotiated agreement that the board approved, and if there's things that are brought up during the school year.
Yep.
That are problematic within the negotiated agreement that was approved by the board, then they strategize and figure out how they're going to address it.
Mm-hmm.
For the next year.
Or even if it's an issue now, we even kind of strategize, and if we're not meeting the expectations of the negotiated agreement, then we could, you know, obviously correct it then, but Chairman Thompson, you did a wonderful job, that's exactly it, so, so it's too full.
We get corrected then? I mean, that would have to be ratified all over again, I mean, how are we gonna correct it?
It's not about correcting, it's, it's following the rules, if, if we're not, if we're not.
Well, you said we could correct it, so that's what I was questioning.
Yeah, correctly, if, if we're not following what the agreement says, that's where the, um, the LEA could come in and say, look, you guys are violating this, and we can work together and say, well, yeah, we're not, or no, we are, and, and that would be the, that would be the part, but two, um, as Chairman Thompson talked about, is, is that if we see an issue in an area, um, you know, in regards to negotiated agreement, that could be something that we can kind of do some pre-work on, and then, and then when the, it does come to IBB, hopefully we'd have all the research and everything to present to IBB, and let IBB make the decision if we're going to, you know, adopt it or change it or not, so.
Okay, and then what is gonna be your role? What do you do? I mean, how?
Being, being part of that team.
So you just bring that back to the board and say, like, I used to do, or we did this, we did that, kind of thing?
And anything that we want changed, you would bring to the table?
No.
Not, not for that, that's gonna be during IBB, so whoever's on that negotiation team.
And part of the agreement to the board asked me to do was that, uh, part of my reports was I would, I would put an update in regards to our, our problem-solving team, and then there would be a, uh, action item for, or discussion item, excuse me, in regards to whatever I would report on, you guys would discuss, that was all put in there.
Because what was, uh, brought out is that apparently, when there's been problems, the board is never informed of them. And my struggle throughout this whole thing is, the premise is that the board approved a negotiated agreement, but.
Well, actually, we didn't, but whatever.
We can agree to disagree on that.
Yeah.
I mean, we did approve it to move forward, but there's so much that needed to be changed in there.
Right.
But that won't be addressed until we actually, um, come to the table for IBB, um, because the problem-solving team is specific to what's currently in place, and, um, if it's, uh, if there's an issue, how can we resolve it?
Okay, so the board threw away going and working on the current agreement, or we're gonna start that at IBB? I'm still trying to figure out, so the workshop that we had was supposed to be the board starting their work on the agreement, that didn't happen, I'm taking.
No, that did not happen.
That's where this came from, PST team.
Right, we were given a presentation of, um, what Rusty's expectations for IBB were going to be.
But IBB is a negotiation between the board and the LEA.
Yes.
And we will still start, we'll start those, or whoever's gonna be on that, on the board's IBB team, that will start in February, we were starting much earlier this year than.
Right.
But we did wanna start it before, because there's gonna be a new, new board member, so.
Okay.
If, that's why we said, let's not quite start that one.
Yeah.
Yeah, until we can say, okay, who is, you know, give everybody equal opportunity to, to join that team if they.
Right, okay, I just want to make sure that we're not in the same predicament, I want to make sure we cut that off somehow, I mean, I know everybody's so busy, but we really gotta fix it.
We do, yeah.
You know, and I want to make sure that we get that done this year, and I don't want it to be a strong arm, because.
And we added, we added an ag, we are adding an agenda item to every single board meeting.
Yep.
To have a conversation, just a discussion, no action item.
Sure, yeah.
To, as a board, we can have a discussion continuously throughout the year to, so that whoever is on that IBB team.
Right.
Knows exactly where the, where all of us stand for that, so that they can go in and. And then, what, um, was, because there is that constant struggle with the fact that the LEA always ratifies before the board's even.
Right.
Done anything, and to prevent the perception of negotiating in bad faith, even though we're not given the information, we will receive the negotiated agreement, and then we can decide, as a board, if we would like it presented to the LEA, after all the negotiating and whatnot is done, I think. We're not deciding. We're not deciding, we are simply agreeing that this should move forward to the LEA for ratification.
And Chairman, Chairman Grusson, this, these were all recommendations by the board, so I added all those as part of the IBB, so.
Okay. Well, thank you guys for entertaining me and bringing me up to speed, I appreciate it. I know everybody, it was a short agenda, but I'm keeping you longer.
HR Director Cunningham, did you have something you wanted to say to us?
Hi, I'm sorry, Trustee Grusson, I was just trying to clarify that the idea of the PST team and the meet and confer is for us to, because we're always at that crunch time.
Yes.
Waiting for money to come in and everything, and the idea is for us to at least negotiate everything out on the table, and hopefully have a lot of the language pieces and everything taken care of, and then when we get to that money, that stuff's all cleaned up, and then we just need to focus on the money.
Yeah, absolutely.
So that, that's the intent behind all of it.
Yep, yep, yeah, that's.
And one of the things that I pointed out is, it felt like the PST team is basically the district leadership team, because the district, it was my understanding, the district leadership team worked with the LEA to try to figure out or work through whatever issues that may have arisen from the negotiated agreement, and what was going on in the buildings, so that the, the, uh, relationships remained collaborative.
Mm-hmm.
But now, I, I asked Rusty about the, that parallel of you've got the district leadership team and the PST team, and it seems like the same people are, are we really doing that? And he said he would think about that, so.
Well, to clarify, too, there, there is some similarities, at this point, the PST team, it would be HR, because it's applicable, finance, which is applicable, um, and then obviously a board member, and me, so that would be the team, which is not the entire IBB team, so. And then, um, the LEA would select, to keep it even, four members from them, so.
Well, it seemed like, so it'd be four members and Jason?
I just don't want it brought to the board.
No, Jason is included of the four, it's an even split, it's, it's four.
Not if you're adding a board member to the PST, that'd be recent five.
I removed, I removed one, so.
Oh, okay, all right.
So, and we keep those even numbers, okay.
And if you would like to re-add that, I could add another one, I mean, whatever you guys.
I shared it with you, Jason, did you see it?
I did.
Okay, so we can look at, so we can just keep it even, all right?
I just want to make sure that.
Less is more.
We had the understanding, it's the board's negotiation with the LEA, so regardless of what happens, PST, IBB, whatever, if the board gets it and says, no, we don't like any of it.
It goes back to IBB.
That's just the way it is, I, I don't want the whole strong-arm thing.
Yeah, I agree.
You know?
Hundred percent.
Yeah, so, you know, I just want to make sure that we stay on the same page, as it doesn't feel like it. I don't have any more questions about that, but thank you guys for all of the information, I appreciate it, and thank you, Randy, for volunteering. Make sure it's not at 3:30 in the day.
That is one thing that I did point out, is that these meetings can't be during.
Yeah.
School hours, because some people work.
Yeah.
Some people work.
Some people are.
Outside of the district.
And in the district.
That's according to your schedule, okay?
Okay, um, are we good to move on to the topics and times for the City of Rathston meeting?
So the City of Rathston had asked me to, um, speak with you guys, see what times would work for you the best for your meetings, so that they can kind of work with that, too, and if there's any topics that you want to address, or anything that you want to put, because they have to put it on their agenda.
Are we having, is this just for the commu, is that what we're doing? We're just working it out so the community can attend, or is, are we, are they requesting us to be there?
It's, it's just a, it's just a.
Informal.
Informal meeting and everything like.
Ask with them, like, like we did before, just.
Yeah, they just have to have it on there.
Yeah, okay.
Continue to.
Yeah, that was fun, I actually liked.
Collaborate that.
Yeah.
Relationship with.
Yeah, it was good to meet everybody and talk, yeah, I liked that one.
Um, so what times and dates would work best for you guys, so I can shoot them back to them?
Sometime in January.
Well, they'll have, well, no, they, I guess they don't have anybody, they, they maintain.
That might be a good idea, because we will have the new guy, and maybe we can have Bob come as a liaison, because here's the thing, Bob has so much knowledge.
Oh, we're gonna make him come back for a, and on-call meeting.
Yeah, we might need him at the meeting, because Bob always comes up with now, now, because he was there, right? He did the original meeting.
Or, we could hold it before January and invite the new trustee to come as a guest, and sit at the table with us.
Yeah, that would be good.
Just to.
I, I think it's important that Bob's there, I really do.
Bob, you are so important to us.
Yeah.
You, you are, you don't give yourself enough credit.
I'm sure you will do fine.
In other words, he's like, he's like, no.
No, thanks.
Tapping out. Bob, have you ever heard of short-timer attitude?
TBNT.
That's known as laying down.
Thanks, but no thanks.
TBNT?
Yeah.
Thanks, but no thanks.
Oh, gotcha, okay. So, um, the Veterans Memorial needs to be something discussed?
So when are we doing this meeting?
I don't know, we haven't picked a date. Well, we have to give several dates, apparently.
Okay.
Did the cities give a preference of, like, dates, like, days of the week that they prefer to hold a meeting on?
Yes, Tuesdays and Thursdays.
Well, I can't do either one of those, so y'all can go without me, just so you know. Heck, if one more of us drops, then we don't even need to notice a quorum, jeez.
And do we know why they can't do it on Friday?
They didn't say, they just said that they prefer Tuesdays and Thursdays.
Probably because that's their regular meeting.
Oh, but that's not what you sent us.
I think they regularly meet on Wednesdays.
Sent us a whole list of.
Oh, okay.
Things they wanted to talk about.
Oh, they did?
No, you did. No, you did!
I did?
You did. Yeah, you did.
What happened?
Last week, maybe the week before.
It was a letter sent to you.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, I just forwarded it to you.
I don't know why it was done that way and not, yeah, that was.
Kinda weird.
Yeah.
Well, we're pretty full.
I just gathered during the meeting, so, I forgot.
What about, um, and Michelle can't do Thursdays, can they do something like the week of the 17th, November 17th, or is that too, we're getting into holidays and all of our other meetings?
They were thinking more towards after Thanksgiving.
Oh, okay, so December, okay.
So before Christmas?
Yes.
Like that gets easier? How about sometime during the week of the eighth?
January.
How about sometime during the week of the eighth of December?
Yeah.
That's kind of a wide-open week.
Yeah.
Still cannot do Tuesdays and Thursdays, just saying.
Okay, that's, we have to do it that weekend.
Okay.
So we can't do Tuesday or Thursday, but can they see if they can do, you know, Wednesday, Friday, Monday?
How about Saturday afternoon?
Shut your mouth, I don't do any kind of school board on Saturday afternoon.
Monday, the eighth?
We could do that.
Yeah, I'm fine with that.
I'm fine with that.
I'll make it there, available.
I'm good.
Any other topics you guys would like to bring up?
We should discuss, um, or entertain the, um, parking recs agreement, I really think there should be some discussion of that.
Yeah, memorizing it?
Yeah.
By the way, big deal, I talked to the city administrator about the flag problem, and he said, all we need is an application, so I don't know what the holdup is.
The big flag application?
Yeah.
Well, there you go.
Well, I think, too, a lot of it was.
Pass the order.
I think a lot of it was, uh, the cost of the flagpole, because it has to be engineered, it's so tall, so big, and so the engineering costs went way up.
Wait, are we buying a pole?
No, the, the senior class raised money, and so they, they wanted to put in a giant flagpole, like Spokane Valley. Well, the city said it wasn't within their ordinance, so, what'd you say, Bob, we just have to put in a?
Application.
Application? And then.
CFO Grantham, do you have something to say about it?
Yeah, so the application requires a bunch of reports, um, that cost quite a bit of money, the title reports.
Requires what?
Report, the title reports for the property and stuff, and so that wasn't factored into the cost that they fundraised for, to do the application with the city is gonna be quite expensive for us.
Put NA.
Okay.
NA.
We're exchanging that for our facility use.
That's not what's in the agreement, but.
Could try.
We can try.
We can change the MOU.
Well, we can have the conversation with them, and see.
But that's what held it up in the past as well, is just the, the cost of completing their application.
Title report?
Mm-hmm, they want a title report for the property to submit it.
Why? I mean, for what?
Standard with their variance request that we're asking.
They can, they can waive that.
Yeah, that's.
And they will.
Okay, I will attempt.
And as far as the engineering, usually, a lot of those companies, if you tell them what you're doing and stuff, and that it requires, a lot of them will give you, or already come with engineering plans.
I don't think so much the pole as it is the base.
The base, yeah.
Yeah.
You know, if it's 10 feet tall, or has this much base, if it's 100 feet tall.
Right.
It's a playground.
Or you know what else you always could do too, if they don't have already engineered plans. You said the valley, Spokane Valley, has one?
They have three.
Yeah, well, maybe they'll share.
Yeah.
I mean, they're engineering, I guarantee, I mean, unless it's an IBC code, but it would be probably much more than Idaho. But yeah, maybe they'll share.
Share their engineering plans?
Yeah, and just tell them, "Our kids were, you know, admiring, and they raised money, but we didn't know this was a cost."
Now we have roadblocks.
Yeah. That's what I would do. I might have.
We need that flag.
Yeah.
I like it.
Okay, yeah.
We'll figure it out.
Okay.
Do they list the members of their.
Everybody's minds are.
Their zoning and planning people?
Are they bringing their zoning?
Do they list, you know, on their website? I think I know somebody on there.
Their planning and zoning commission?
Do you? Okay.
Chris Close.
That's their planner, but they have a planning and zoning commission.
Yeah.
I'll reach out to James about the application.
Yeah, okay. If you need help, I mean.
So any other topics we need to have on the agenda for this impromptu workshop meeting with the city?
I'm not aware, I mean, our water's good, our right-ofways, I mean, our easement, I mean, all the other stuff that we dealt with, that's all.
Oh, I'm glad you mentioned that. So I think we need to put on there the re-dileo with the junior high. We're going to, or middle school, middle school, the, where the cars go, entrance and exits, thank you. Yes, thank you. There's big words. I just can't wrap my head around them tonight.
Their current commissioners are Nick Burns, Nina Beasley, Ken Blesky, the.
Okay.
Blesky and Cynthia Bessie.
Okay.
What, what was the last holdup on that, I think some of the headwinds over at the middle school? Was that City or IBB?
Trustee Jones, Jessica Grantham, Chief Finance Officer. There's no holdup. We are finalizing the engineering of the plans, so that we can submit the request to ITD to get it approved. It's just, the engineering's taken a little bit of time. The survey work was completed this week. I actually saw them out there on Tuesday?
Tuesday.
Tuesday, yeah. Yeah, so they're completing the survey work, so we can take it to ITD to get it approved.
Well, and the only reason I want to have a conversation is because I don't want something to come up later on down the road, like. You have to.
The city has been involved in the conversation. We, we have looped them in, because they're a partner in this. So wanting to make sure that we get it all taken care of, so that we can get that taken care of next summer, as soon as school's out, so it's.
Yes, we should probably ask them if they have any questions from us, if there's, you know.
Yeah.
Our facilities director's been working very closely with their team as well.
It's okay for us, though, to have that conversation?
Absolutely.
You know how it is, sometimes people don't make meetings, so they have to be.
We have to have another full meeting to fill, fill in that person?
Here, I was thinking we were done at six-thirty, but, you know.
Cynthia's is going to be an informal meeting. Do I need to be there for it? Since there won't be any minutes.
It's at their, no, there will be minutes, but it'll be on them. It won't be on us.
Are we meeting there?
They're hosting.
Yeah.
They're hosting this time. We hosted last time.
Yeah, so you don't need to be there, okay. I mean, unless you want to come.
You do.
Put that, write it down. He has to be there.
We better get a retainer for Bob.
I'm surprised he's not in the consulting business.
Yes.
Oh, boy. Okay. Do we have any other topics for discussion for this meeting with the city?
No.
Not that I can think of, that they sent, are we? Okay, then we have the dates to remember. Trustee Grissom did ask for us to consider moving the policy committee meeting, so.
But I know you said you can't do.
I can't do Tuesdays, Thursdays.
Right.
I can, within reason, do Wednesdays, Fridays.
Hearing's on the eleventh and twelfth, that's.
Ten.
On tenth?
No.
No.
Eleventh and twelfth, you're right, sorry. Because that can't be. Sorry. But they don't. That can't be.
The one on the eleventh is at seven.
Yeah, I think it looks like they got better, hasn't it?
Yeah.
So my calendar?
Yeah.
And then.
Put that in there.
It will be here for the eleventh. They'll be for.
Oh, Lord, whatever. And they should be so lucky that it would ever be born.
Because.
On the eleventh, yeah.
On the eleventh, yeah.
The other kid will have to move.
Yes.
But as for Fridays, I've got all a lot of after-school, or after-work stuff scheduled on Fridays.
Who doesn't?
It's the weekend.
Well, think about it, whatever. Whatever it was for, for everybody. But I mean, it's just been a while, because the meetings all got changed.
Right.
On Friday, I, I mean, I can't be forced to do.
On what Fridays?
Can't be forced to do.
Uh, well.
We still do dishes.
Three.
All the woods. Save it for the week. Save it for Monday.
I don't know.
Okay.
Yeah, I just don't think I can do that early.
Okay.
If I had a guarantee on who was going to call me, I could, but with my luck, it'd be, you know.
I need to.
It's a huge client, and I would have to deal with it.
Okay.
I mean, the five-thirty's cutting it close as it is for me, just because, you know, the working hours. I mean, I, it, sometimes I can be completely cut off by five, and then I just pick up when I go back home, but.
See what I can do. I'll do my best to try and be here on the eleventh. I was waiting for a quarter, and the order came through, so I committed to Tuesdays and Thursdays. It's out of my hands.
That's fine. Just, just look at your calendar and whatever you've got. I mean, it sounds like Fridays are out. Tuesdays and Thursdays can't be done, so it's only Mondays and Wednesdays, so.
Right.
Yeah, I guess I could just try to do Mondays. I really would like to see it straightened out, but.
I hear you.
That's fine.
All righty then. On that note, I guess we will adjourn the meeting. Hey, Bob, I don't appreciate the surprise. Surprise look. Okay, so it's seven forty-three, meeting adjourned.